There was the street vendor who was killed. He was chased by some police and he had a hijack. And he was of African descent, I can't say which country. He wasn't Sudanese, but there were protests one of the nights we were there. And we left Jack, he was literally walking back to his apartment. And he said, "My roommates and I came upon trash cans on fire and people hurling stuff."
Get to your rooms!
I was like, "Just go home, please." But you know, that's kind of a... That was the only thing. Most of the time, I don't really worry about him because I know he'll be fine. But it was a... Yeah, we had a great time. My parents did really well. It was great, so.
And you guys got along? Everybody got along?
Everybody got along. Flight was good. Flight was easy. And well, we flew from Chicago direct. So even though the drive to Chicago stinks, it's awesome to only have one flight. You don't have to worry about your stuff getting delayed.
Yup.
And we didn't, you know, even if you got delayed, you don't miss a connecting flight. So we had no other, no problems. We were on time. It was fabulous. Yes, yes, I know! This is right there! No way! That gives me goosebumps. Oh my gosh! Okay, I drank the wrong one. Unless... Did you guess? No, that's, this is yours. This is mine. Okay. Are we waiting on Rhonda and... Oh, India, she's here.
Is she here?
Just Rhonda? Anybody heard from Rhonda today?
Is Rhonda coming?
Anybody heard from Rhonda today?
Um, I have not. She never reads? She is not responding to texts? She's not responding to emails or anything?
I have tried too. I've tried this last week because once I got home, I wanted to kind of touch base with her. I haven't talked to her either. She didn't respond to me, but I thought maybe she was gone for spring break. Because they were off. You know, Hawkeye was...
Yeah, I've emailed her a couple times. I've texted her multiple times and I'm not going to email her.
Well, in both these, I just open and close, right?
Oh, she's trying to get in. Okay, hold on.
Um, both these, I just open. I don't have to.
Open them?
They're not.
Look for comments.
Okay, that's why I say both of them are roll call?
Yup.
Okay, that's good to know. Oh, Sue. Oh, that makes me want to throw up. We just didn't want you.
We decided to stop without Jake.
Well, and it's raining now and...
What's the base?
And you're going at seven, right? Yes, because Central's performing, right? Okay. Two seconds, y'all. We'll be, we're getting there.
FYI, and Jane might want to see this too. Jane?
What?
Just FYI, it's, it's right on here, but it's wrong over here.
Oh!
It should be the 24th through the 31st, so...
Okay, because I changed...
If you want to clarify that at all, we can.
Yeah, Charles is going to talk.
Well, this one, yeah, is this one even online?
No.
No. Nothing is online.
So I don't even know that we need to... We'll get, when we publish it tomorrow, we'll make sure it's correct.
How do I get this to stay at 100%? Can I get it anyway?
Yeah, it'll stay there now.
No, it won't. As soon as I go to the next thing, it goes back.
Go up here and do, on this one, go to this, this arrow.
Oh, this arrow. Yup.
And then go down to zoom to, uh, sit with and see if it'll...
Nope, it's fine. I'll just...
Well, that's weird.
I know, last time I was like, "So every time." I just need it big enough that I can see it. Okay. Are we all ready? Are we, everybody good? May I go? May I start? Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Directors to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you read the mission statement? Because I don't have my paper. And Sue Flynn will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Sue. The next item on our agenda then this evening is Item A on page one, and this is the public hearing for the 2018-2019 School District Calendars. So I will declare that hearing open and ask if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board. We're going to start with the issue of calendars. So this is our public hearing on calendars. And if there is, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, then, and we'll have more discussion on our calendar later on under our action items. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Thanks, Jesse. And a second?
Second.
And this requires a roll call vote, actually, so I'll start down with India.
Yes.
Thank you. And Jesse?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Rhonda? Aster? Lyle? Chair votes yes, so our hearing is closed. Thank you. The next item on our agenda then is Item B, and this is a second hearing. This is the public hearing for the Chiller replacement at Hoover Middle School. And so I would declare that that hearing open and then ask again if there's anyone here in our audience who wishes to address the board on the Chiller replacement at Hoover Middle School. And if so, please come forward and state your name and address. No one wants to talk about Chillers? All right, then, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, India. And a second? Thanks, you two can duke it out, so.
Aster.
Aster, you got it. All right, awesome. All right, so again, this requires a roll call vote, so I'll start with India.
Yes.
Thank you. And Jesse?
Yes.
And Sue?
Yes.
And Rhonda? And Aster? And Lyle?
Yes.
And Shanley votes yes. And that ends our romper room. I'm kidding. So that hearing is closed. Thank you. Uh, we'll be talking about this later on in our agenda as well. The next item on our agenda then is Item C, and this is a board celebration about why Waterloo schools. At the beginning of the year, Dr. Lindeman charged us all to take a moment and think about why Waterloo schools and why we're here and why we, we love what we do. And so I know that we have A.J. Cassidy here this evening, who's going to come up and tell us a little bit about his why Waterloo. Welcome.
I'm sure this doesn't get adjusted too often. I don't know. Can you all hear me if I stand here?
Not for you!
Thanks, Shanley, members of the board, Dr. Lindeman, Dr. McNulty, Dr. Smith. It's a pleasure to be here. Dr. Smith actually asked me a few months back to celebrate my why Waterloo, and I'm, I'm a busy man. Sometimes I'm hard to track down. Uh, I, I live and breathe Waterloo schools. I was born in Waterloo, born and incubated, not born and raised. We actually moved to Center Point right before I would have started at Orange. But my sister was an Orange student, old Orange, which tells you how old I am. Uh, my brother was a Hoover student, and then I went to Center Point, Urbana-Kate 12. I initially, when I was going to college, didn't know what I wanted to do, but I knew I didn't want to teach. I knew that absolutely I don't want to be a teacher like mom. Well, after about two years of soul searching and thinking, this isn't really what I want to do. Accounting isn't what I want to do. I took about five years off. And then I discovered that teaching people how to use products and teaching people how to use equipment was something that I kind of had a natural knack for. So I called my mom one day and I said, "Okay, you can't say I told you so, but I'm going to go back to UNI and get my teaching degree." She said, "I told you so." My first field experience I did back at my old high school, so it was familiar territory. I knew everybody. It was with my old high school English teacher. My second field experience was at Price Lab, NU High. And my third field experience, don't boo, it was at Cedar Falls High School. So the first time that I set foot in a Waterloo school after the time I was about four years old, I was still four feet tall, but I was still very little comparatively, uh, was when I went to do my student teaching with Heather Bentley Wagner at West High. And I remember the first time I walked in the doors, first of all, I was impressed with the facility, but I remember I lost my breath, not just because of the three floors of stairs, but with how wide the hallways were. I had never been in a hallway that big before. It didn't feel like, anyway, and I'd, I'd been to the Pentagon and that wasn't as breathtaking. But I was just imagining and thinking about all of the students that were going to come through those doors, and oh my gosh, it's, it's real now. So it was a little bit nerve wracking, even though I was a 28-year-old non-traditional student, uh, and just seeing that mass of humanity move through the hallways. And one thing I sought to do when I first started teaching, and I hope to continue that as I, as I continue teaching, is to bring that sense of a community that I had in a smaller school district to a larger school district like Waterloo. So I have roughly 150 students every day, and I, I make it a personal goal to know each of them by name within the first two weeks of school. I greet them at the door every day, have some sort of personal connection with them. I try to make it to all of their athletic or music or theater events at least once. I try to go everything at least once. Golf is hard. I'm, I'm sorry if there are any golfers here, but that one's tricky. So I'm hoping to bring a, a sense of community to the Waterloo schools and show students that you can be a part of a vital and vibrant community and give back. So in addition to teaching, I also spearhead the PBIS efforts at West High along with Emily Youngblood. Uh, I'm the Link Crew Coordinator along with Jess Wass, which is a program to acclimate our freshmen to the halls of West High and teach them what it means to be West. And I'm also an assistant basketball coach with Dr. Papp. And as some of you know, uh, that is, that is a certain level of commitment that, that we take pride in. So why Waterloo schools? I, I've been very fortunate to get a lot of opportunities and a lot of support, some of which comes from people in this room. And I want to continue to share that support with our students, with our families, and with our community going forward. So my why Waterloo is the opportunities that are present and the opportunities that I hope to continue providing students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Cassidy. I can honestly say that all three of my monkeys have benefited from your leadership and toolage at West High. So thank you very much for that. So, anybody else? All right. All right, well, this is our third time that we're going to hear from perhaps individuals and delegations tonight. Um, this is the time, if anyone wishes to address the board, that they may do so. Um, and so I've asked if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board, that you come forward, state your name and address. All right. Then seeing no one, we will move on to our consent agenda. And it's pretty lengthy tonight, so give me a minute because I'm going to get through all these pieces that are on there. So, um, the first item is Item D. It is the minutes of the February 26th, 2018 regular board meeting. We have personnel appointments and adjustments, which are Item E. Bills due and bills payable and bills paid between board meetings, which is Item F. The West High School Culinary Team travel to Providence, Rhode Island, which is Item G. The donations from the Nestle USA, which is Item H. Donations from RJ McElroy Trust, Item I. Donations from donorschoose.org, which is Item J. The WESP contract agreement, which is Item K. The Junior Achievement Memorandum of Agreement for the 2018-2019 school year, which is Item L. So I'd like a motion to get those consent agenda items on the table, please.
So moved.
Thanks, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, India. And are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
G, Item G.
Item G, the West High School Culinary Team travel. Great.
E.
E? Personnel appointments and adjustments.
And I don't want to remove H, I, and J, but I just wanted to bring to the attention of our community that it's a donation from Nestle USA, a donation from RJ McElroy Trust, and a donation from donor choose. So the true comment that it takes an entire village, an entire community, an entire corporate community to build a school district, that is true. And we just thank those donors immensely for their, um, their help in making us succeed.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, that can, that can be our discussion for the agenda items too, so. So Items E and Items G, is there anything else that board members wish to have removed? Any further discussion then on Items D, F, H, I, J, K, or L? All right, then, seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the following items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Those, uh, items on the consent agenda pass. And we will move on then to Item E, which is, um, the personnel appointments and adjustments. And I will get there. Sorry. Um, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed. Can I get that on the table?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second, Jesse? Okay, and then discussion, Aster? Aster, is your mic on?
Is your mic on?
Oh, it's not.
Okay, sorry.
Can you hear me?
We're doing too many...
So the question was, um, I've seen, um, in the notes are a couple of times between a biz coordinator, a regular biz, and then a behavior focus coach. Can you explain a little bit the difference of...
I, I can start with a behavior intervention specialist, and that tends to be a targeted, uh, professional who works with students who have behavior objectives, um, and, you know, is able to support the student, um, not just in the general education environment, but in special environments. Behavior focus coach, uh, actually provides a little more broader support across the school, not just necessarily with the students involved, but with, with our professional staff. So making sure that the IEP and the behavior plan is focused, is focused, but also being followed and the implementation is with fidelity. So that the IEP is, again, the paramount, um, response the student needs.
And Bev, I guess as long as this was pulled, and I just, you know, noticing we're starting to get more retirements on here?
We are.
So, um, I guess how is that looking? And, um, I guess just kind of a overview of that.
Okay, um, in terms of replacement or just in how they're coming in?
How they're coming in and replacement, I guess.
I think we're, we probably won't have as many as we've had in the past. I, I always say that, and then you don't know. Um, I can give you a total next week or I'll just send an email to you. In terms of replacements, because we're not at a place where we need to, um, post the same, the way we have in the past, and we're not in a place where there may be reductions, we're in a great place. Because as soon as, we have a Google Doc, and as soon as a building principal indicates that they think an individual was maybe leaving, then I start supporting them and trying to get them to find out when that person makes the decision. When they do, they, we request resignation, and then we immediately post the job and we can fill it immediately. We have a number of jobs already filled, uh, for next, for the fall, a number of them, because we don't have to wait to see if we're going to be moving people around. We're really in a, a good place. Um, we've had, I think there have been seven career fairs thus far. I've sent about 14 administrators out to those, those career fairs. Eleven administrators have gone to those career fairs, and they're recruiting people and we're getting them in. We've got a couple principals who have really served as screeners. And so even if we don't have a position, I've asked those two individuals to pull the people in, interview them, kind of see what their strengths are, so when a position does come open, we can match them to it. So we're in a very good place.
Typically, how many new hires do you have each year?
Uh, 60. Probably 60, 65. Um, when we had those retirement packages, we had in excess of 100, but we, with the teacher shortage climate, we probably won't do that again.
Back to the behavior intervention specialist, uh, is there a full-time in each school?
When you, you know, yes. I would say generally speaking, across the district, there is, just based upon the needs of the individual educational plans, um, and the support that students need, both in the general education environment and then in their, uh, specific classrooms.
You're thinking biz or biz coach, which?
The biz.
Yeah, behavior intervention specialists are basically paraeducators that receive additional training so they can focus on behavior needs. So they would be paid at, um, the paraeducator rate with a differential. The behavior coach is paid at, as a, um, administrative support position because they have a lot more responsibility, as Mr. Mc, uh, Dr. McNulty said. So they're working with the other biz. They're giving them strategies. They're checking on, um, them in terms of their abilities to support students.
I was thinking that the need would vary dramatically from school to school. So are there several in some schools? Or how does it, is the job flexible enough that, you know, it just seems like it would be, uh, unusual if we had exactly one job in each school?
For the behavior intervention specialist or for the coach? For the, eh, behavior intervention specialist, there may be a number. It just depends upon, you're exactly right. It depends upon the makeup of the number of behavior classes. In some buildings, there may be one, and they may be in charge of the intervention room. So they would manage students who would go for timeout or would go for thinking or, um, a safe seat. In other class, in other buildings, there may be two or three classrooms that would warrant a para that has the additional training to provide the additional support. So they, there would be more than one in a building.
That was dead on, Dr. Smith.
And I think the, the coach, the behavior coach is a relatively new position because we have some district-level programs that are housed in, um, hosted in, in one particular building. And so if there is, if there are a number of students who may need that additional support, then we've added that coach position, not only to help the students at an extra level, but also to help the staff that may work with, with, uh, students with needs.
And there aren't that many of those positions in the district?
No, I think there's five.
Four, five.
That's the coach.
Well, Bev, I'd just like to applaud, you know, being proactive rather than reactive. You know, I, the whole personnel, um, environment we have, I just really appreciate that we're on the proactive side rather than the reactive and get caught behind not having teachers or...
Absolutely. We're in a good place.
That's great. And then lastly, just coaching, you know, I'm noticing more for our spring and, uh, our spring sports hopefully were pretty set, and summer is, is it, you know, obviously that's a day-to-day thing, I guess, with people resigning. But are we making more inroads in, in, um, hires that might stay a little while?
I don't know. We have, there are a couple of hot positions. I'm sure you know where they are, one at each of the high schools. And, um, I know the ADs have developed flyers and sent them out across the country. Um, I've been working with Michael. We have done a comparative study of the UEN districts in terms of the salaries, that they have stipends that we pay our coaches, and so we're making some adjustments there so we can at least be competitive.
Thank you. Just a quick question about the job fair, the 14 you were mentioning?
14 people?
Yes. Uh, what areas, areas have you sent?
Have we sent people to? Chicago, Ames, Iowa City, and UNI. We sent three people to Chicago. They did an ESL because we're looking for people who can serve in those dual-enrolled courses. We've got, had Iowa State, University of Iowa, and the big one was UNI last week. We've got Madison to go, possibly Purdue, and a real, a successful one for us in April is the Minnesota job fair.
And I just wanted to point out that, uh, in our efforts to, um, address the equity in diversity in administrators, particularly, um, black male principals, I'm hoping that we can really be proactive because we really need that representation in our elementary, middle, and high schools. And hopefully, if we need to go outside of the state to, to bring them here. And I know there was a discussion at some point about, um, certification or something like that across state lines. But I just wanted to, to bring that up, that, um, we, we really need to try to get some black male principals in our schools here in the district.
We're working on it. As I crack, as I go across the country and I run into people, I get their information and I stalk them. And so there are a couple of people, one in particular that I'm trying to get here, um, just to have a conversation because they need to see us, to love us.
And let me add to that. I've been working with, uh, a number of the other UENs and, and Dr. Smith has led, um, has led a great, uh, movement towards diversifying our administrative team. And I think we have a strong focus in, in adding as many individuals as we can who will lead us to that new direction. Um, I would also say that, um, you know, one of the things that is helping us is that there's been a change in the state code a little bit regarding administrators who have their doctorate degrees and, and, and less coursework now to transfer from out of state, uh, which is a huge benefit. I, I, you know, had to take six classes coming from Wisconsin, and we all understand that. Um, we certainly do. But now, um, I think, Dr. Lindeman, there's a, a huge change in that.
Well, yeah, and, and I had doubled back to check with, um, the people who make those decisions. So what we had heard was that they, there was going to be a, um, a potential relieving of the coursework for somebody to come. And so that actually, I found out, is actually on the table and is hoping to be approved. So we will, we will, um, work to support that legislation to make sure that that happens. Because when, if, if the reciprocal, uh, teaching license, that really helps for teaching, and then the same thing for administrators, what happens is somebody comes here and if they don't have, if they are, were an administrator in a different dist, or a different district in a different state, but their teaching license isn't, isn't, uh, doesn't meet Iowa's requirements, they actually have to, in order to be a certified administrator, you have to be licensable in teaching. So you may, your light, your, your administrator license might be fine, but unless you would be eligible to get a teaching license, you have to go back and take all of the coursework to get your teaching license in order to get a administrator license. So there's some legislation. So if somebody is missing a couple teaching courses, they have to go back and become a teacher, even though they're never going to teach, they're only here to be an administrator. And so we're, we're working on that. Um, I, I think that's really good proposed legislation. We will definitely be tracking that and supporting that work. But I found out it had not gone through yet. I actually missed that. I thought it had been passed, but it was not. So it's still on the docket. We will watch.
And let me just finally add that, um, you know, my statement by no means is, is a castigation of the, the current excellent school principals and the school leadership that we have. I just want to say that. But I also don't want to minimize the importance of having, um, black males in our district and in our schools, working with our emerging populations of minority students. One of the reasons why our district is so awesome is because we do have great diversity. And we do have people that are looking to us for, for that leadership as well. And so I do want to thank, uh, Dr. Smith for her efforts. I, you know, a lot of times when I ask questions, I already know the answers to them. But I, I just want for the public to know that, you know, that we are working on those things.
Anything further for Dr. Smith?
All right, then, all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to Item G, which is, um, page 26. It says the West High School Culinary Team travel to Providence, Rhode Island. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve travel for West High students and Tracy Hume to attend the Pro-Start National Invitational for Culinary Arts in Providence, Rhode Island, April 26th through May 1st, 2018.
So moved.
Thanks, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Excellent. And with that, Tracy, you're here, so I'm going to ask that you come forward because I know we've got some questions for you. And, and while you're doing that, can I just say a super huge kudos and shout out to you guys? The fourth time, are you kidding me? And I have heard the best story about the fact that when you guys enter the arena, it goes silent, and they say things like, "They're here." Because you guys are rock stars. So we're very, very, very proud of you. So we'd love to hear a little bit more about your trip.
Thank you. So we just need some permission and we're hoping that you want to send us away again. We aim to make you very proud. Last year, we got twenty-seventh in the nation out of eighteen thousand kids.
Wow.
So I'm bringing some pretty, pretty cool kids that have worked extremely hard. I don't think they really knew what they were getting into when they signed up for this. We've spent a lot of time together and I want to take these five kids across the country.
Will you tell us a little bit about the, the competition and?
Is your mic on?
Is the mic on?
I don't think it is.
Green light.
Low green light, it is. Maybe you need to stand right directly in front of it. But for those, we do have some newer board members, but also just for our public watching, I'd love to know, I mean, you know, you guys get your thirty by thirty space, or maybe that's not quite right.
Yeah, it's a ten foot by ten foot square. No refrigeration.
Good that I asked.
A little bit bigger than that. No refrigeration and no running water. The kids can only leave the square to wash their hands, and there's a hand washing station nearby where they cook. We transport all of our equipment and all of our food. The one year that we went to California, we didn't ship our food and it was a logistical nightmare. You know when you go into the grocery store and you know right where the marshmallows are. I had to go to five stores in California and still didn't find everything that I needed. So we're going to have our equipment shipped out there. Sharon Gary and Cedarland are going to drive it for us so that we won't have to shop when we're out there and they'll take good care of our equipment. So we're going to leave on Thursday, fly out of Waterloo and get into Providence at about two o'clock. We'll do some local things that day. On Friday, we need to check in our equipment and our groceries. They have to be at optimum temperature. If they're not at the correct temperature, they will take the food away and then we have to replace it. So it's a very strict, very rigid, very detail oriented competition that we're entering. So we'll check things in. We don't actually compete until Sunday afternoon. So there'll be some nerves that will be happening during that time, watching other teams. The team that I do want them to see is Texas. Texas tends to, they've been in the top five for the last ten years and I want to see, we're going to have someone videotape them because they'll be competing when we are. So we'll fly back then on Tuesday. So I'm going to let the girls talk a little bit and tell them what they love about this team, so.
Go ahead, just something that you love, something that you found good.
I heard Emily, Emily Reinerston, do you remember Emily from last year, everybody knows M? M said this year, this is the most important, cool, monumental thing I did in my high school and I'm so proud of it. So for, for a kid like Emily, who has a five point O and has done a lot of things in our district, for her to say that just kind of makes me feel pretty proud. So what is it that you love?
My favorite part of the team, I think, like besides the cooking, and I'm the captain, so I'm kind of in charge of everyone and I make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to. And if they're not, I crack down on them a little and tell them to, come on, like do what you're supposed to. But I think besides all of that, behind all of that is like the relationships I make with the people and the friendships I create because we're not just a group of students that cook together like once or twice a week. We talk pretty much every day. We're more, I would consider us more of a family than we are a group of friends or a group of students. And I think that's honestly been my favorite part of the team is just creating those bonds with people. And like it's, some people, it's people I never would have met before and now they're my closest friends and they're a part of my family and I never would have met them before if it weren't for this.
Talk to one another, it's a pretty interesting thing.
We act like brother and sisters, yeah.
What about you, Haley?
I don't have something very detailed like that, but I'd say my favorite part is opening up my food palate to a hundred because normally, you know, chicken strips, that's like my thing. But now I'm eating beets that kind of taste like dirt, but mixing them with other flavors to make it taste really like amazing.
What year are you guys, what's, what's the year? What's the, what year are you?
Sophomores.
Both sophomores, so did you start last year or what?
Um, I took a culinary one class last year and that's kind of how I got introduced to culinary and into the team because I, I fell in love with the class and I knew about the team, but I, I was way too shy to say anything to Miss Hume about it. So you know M, she's over whispering to M, she's over whispering to Miss Hume, Grace wants to do the culinary team, Grace wants to do it, but don't tell her I told you. So that's how I got into it. And you took culinary this year and she, I don't know how you exactly found out about it.
I heard about it from my sister who graduated last year. And I was interested in it, but I was also kind of scared because I was like, oh, this is really new. And Hume was kind of pushing me to do it, not pushing me, but like, she was really telling me to do it because I was in her class.
Also on our team, we have Savannah Weldon, who is a senior. And I know that she plans to pursue a co, a career in culinary. And then we have Fong Pham and Isaiah Robbins, and they're both juniors. And I know that Isaiah plans to move on to culinary school as well. And Fong plans to go into art school, which really like links with what we do because it's not just food, it's art too. Our plates are beautiful and that's, Fong does our dessert plate and.
It's beautiful.
It's none, nobody else could, nobody else on our team could do that or, um, so he's just.
So is there more than the five during, during, just going to this, but I mean during the normal?
I had about twenty kids that had talked to me prior to tryouts. I didn't have that many tryouts, some of them didn't fit. You have to have taken culinary one to be a, on the culinary team. You can't do a winter sport or have a winter job, it's very difficult because I, I take all their time. We're together three nights a week and probably a seven or eight hour day on the weekend. So I suck everything I have out of them. And that's why we win. But I, they try out in about September. I give them a score based on their most recent grade in culinary, their work ethic in class. And it's a private grade just that I give them based on their work ethic. And then they get a grade based on their knife skills. I come up with a composite and that's how I pick the kids, so.
So is there any deficiency in the area of support in terms of, you look at your equipment compared to those of the other schools competing or?
No, I, I, West High has been overwhelmingly supportive. It's an expensive venture. We didn't know what kind of protein that we wanted to use this year and I called one of the protein vendors and offered, ordered a hundred and seventy-five dollars worth of fish and we decided not to use it. I mean, we practiced with it, we used it all, but that's not just the avenue we decided to go. It's expensive. But what I'm teaching kids, what they're learning and what they're getting out of this is monumental. They have excellent cooking skills. But in addition to that, they're learning skills that will take them in any workplace, management, teamwork. They've just learned a lot, so I'm pretty proud of them.
I see here that Perkins, and I'm guessing that's the restaurant, will, will be chipping in and paying some of the fee?
Um, Perk, it's Perkins Funding. It's Carl Perkins.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, it should say Carl Perkins.
Carl.
If you don't read it, if you don't see it enough.
Okay.
So we have been, we have been well supported. We just found out this week that Brian's on fourth, Brian Sink is doing a fundraiser with us on April fifteenth. He has, he's donating all the food on a Sunday evening and the kids are going to cook with him and we'll sell tickets to that event. Tickets are thirty dollars apiece and we'll do a silent auction that night, so that will really boost our funding. Martin Brothers has been a big supporter, they, they have already given us a thousand dollar check. So we've had a lot of community support.
So in terms of transporting the equipment, that's a pretty, a pretty large donation in terms of time and effort?
It, it is. And if you don't know, you don't probably know my situation, but you probably do all know Sherry and Gary Cedarland. They're my aunt and uncle, so. Sherry also won state from East High. So she's well versed in what happens and she, they're just, they're just really good people, so. Should I talk about that, Pam? The, the one little switch? So Jeff Frost noticed that I didn't have a male chaperone. And since Sherry and Gary are both going, Gary's actually going to be the chaperone instead of Sherry. So there is a little gray area in the letter that you have, I just wanted that to be really clear.
Okay.
It's not that their roles were, will change very much, I mean, they'll still, but if, if during the, if somebody needed, if one of the guys needed something, Gary would take care of it.
Okay.
And you have two male students.
Yes.
Yep.
So do either of you girls think you might want to pursue a career in culinary or art or?
I, yeah, I would like to pursue it. It, it's kind of scary to think about because that's so far in the future, but I'm hoping that we can win state in the future because when you, when you get scholarships to different colleges around the United States and it really like opened, as we won, I saw these scholarships and it's kind of cool to see that. I don't know, it's just cool to see that all different schools are supporting all these kids that want to go out and be in the culinary career.
After looking at your menu, we're hungry.
Yeah, where are our samples, you guys?
Um, I do want to eventually go to culinary school sometime in my life, like it is on my bucket list and I know that I will. But before I do that, I want to go to law school and then kind of pick up culinary as more of a hobby because I don't want it to be something that like stresses me out all the time. And like, not that it, well, it does now, but not like, like I, it's something that I'm so passionate about and I love it so much. But I also don't want, like the stress of it because it is very stressful. And like being the captain, I have like all of their stress in me and my own because like if something goes wrong and I don't catch it, then that's also on me, not just them, it's a team effort. And, okay, but anyways, I do want to pursue culinary, but that will be later in my life, I think, after I go to law school.
So I think I just heard you say that you want to go to law school because it's less stressful. That is, that is a quotable, notable. No, don't apologize, that is, that's a one, that's wonderful.
Absolutely.
Well, I would say you both are, do a very good job of talking and presenting. And I look forward to the event, I'm going to try to come to see you, so if you get, or Brian's, it is now, not see you. But if, get more information to Pam about the tickets.
Please do.
We can see you guys in action.
Yeah, it's, it's a really nice thing that Brian is doing for us. I mean, I don't know, so Perkins should just offer that.
He's great, he's a great man. Good chef, very, very good chef.
Food guy.
Yeah, the three of the, three of the teammates met with him on Saturday and they planned the menu and.
All in about twenty minutes, it was a very quick meeting.
He knew what you wanted.
Do we need to give you guys back your, your visual aids that you gave us? I'm guessing you need these back, so.
But the only thing, now we want you to come back and tell us how you did, but you have to bring us something.
I said samples. I need some of these beautiful desserts on these plates. They're fantastic, yeah, some steak. It'd be great.
I'll take crackers.
Well, we're all super proud of you guys and obviously we've had a lot of questions for you, we really appreciate it. And I will want to echo what Sue just said, you got to come back and let us know how you did. I'm, I'm guessing we're going to see it on Twitter or something like that when you guys are performing, I hope.
I hope so, it's a different playing field out there. We're competing against teams that spend half a day with a chef.
Right.
What team is it? It's not the Texas team, they own a fine dining restaurant on their site, so. It might be Olathe, have you toured, toured Olathe?
Yeah, in Kansas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll do our best.
That's great.
But I have, I have high goal, high goals for them, so.
Absolutely.
We'll let you know.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
All right, then now that we're all starving, all those in favor of approving the West High School Culinary Team Travel to Providence, Rhode Island, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried, best of luck.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll be thinking about you. All right, so the next item on our agenda is item M, it's on page forty. And this is the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school district calendars. And we had a public hearing about this earlier in our meeting this evening, but the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen proposed school district calendars.
So move.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
And for a discussion, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. McNulty. I want him to talk a little bit about the calendar focus groups and then also will you talk us through some of the features in the calendar too?
Certainly can. Also Tara Thomas was also part of the, of the focus group. And initially we had the most professional staff sign up for this focus group because everyone has interest in the calendar.
It's important.
It is very important. And, you know, I think this, this year especially, we had a lot of good input regarding kind of desires around the calendar, start dates, particularly, you know, what was good for students. I mean, that was the, the thing that I think struck me. So we had conversations around what was good for students and what would support our professional staff reaching more students throughout this academic year. A couple of things to note, though, the state has required an, no, earlier than August twenty-third start. And so there isn't a lot of flexibility around the start date. And that will be our start date this year with the staff starting on August twentieth. Another key feature was, I would say one hundred percent of the individuals at the focus group really did enjoy the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. We had some very good discussions that were somewhat contentious but positive, but not on that Wednesday. That was, everyone easily said that's something that was supportive to our families and our professional staff. I'll point out a couple, I think, areas. One other piece of information is, once we had the discussions, we also brought it to our athletic directors and our principals because of the complications around a calendar and sporting events or other activities, extracurricular activities that could reach the state level are always key. So I think that's something to take into effect that even though we may start with a, a strong base of last year's calendar, the state, the state and other regional agencies do affect how each academic year looks. So we will have, we'll have conferences starting in October. And that will be impacted starting on the twenty-fifth. We also have, again, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving will be off. Our winter break will start after Friday, the twenty-first, so it will begin on the twenty-fourth of December. We will come back on January third. This last year, and as we're talking about the winter months, having this weekend in, in my, my mind, this year we had two snow days. Going into next year, because we've added some time to instructional day, we will have one snow day. So we're, we believe that that will probably do us just right, even though Dr. Lindman and myself had a discussion about, we don't want two snow days because that puts us in kind of an awkward end to the school year. But we have also a lot of extra hours built into this calendar, instructional hours. So we feel like we can account for early raises or late, early dismissals. Then I'd also like to point out that we have our spring break following the Regents Universities and that will start on March eighteenth. Let me also add that the seniors' last day, which is critical, because we're under an hours calendar, so we have to have one thousand eighty hours in our academic year, and seniors need one thousand and fifty. We have plenty of hours now for our seniors. And so some of us had great, great concern regarding would we have too many hours lost that we'd have to then adjust our graduation dates because we try to lock those in regarding our venues. So this year, I can almost guarantee, now, I, I will, I will almost guarantee, knowing that we won't have a blizzard that'll last two weeks next year. But of dates of note would be our graduation dates in May. That would be the twenty-third for expo graduation, twenty-four for east graduation. And working with Mr. Mehe at West High, twenty-eighth west graduation. Our final day for students is May thirty-first. And just of note, we, we have four teacher workdays at the end of the year, but because calendar and hours are, you know, always intertwined and we are in negotiations with our W E A, our bargaining unit for teachers, we're hoping those are just place holders until we can have a conclusion to the negotiations. Dr. Smith, Dr. Lindman, Ms. Thomas, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, the only thing I would just commend, the calendar group. It's like Barney Fife and the car driving, if you've ever seen that. The, the calendar committee did just a fabulous job and we have actually had the opportunity to take this calendar and some of the other plans for contracts and hours and that kind of thing back to the focus groups, which were represented across the board by about a hundred and twenty staff members. Some teachers, paras, custodians, food service workers, you know, a variety of people. And we are so excited about the feedback that we're getting. We were, actually Bev and Charles and I were at a meeting and just recently, and once, once we presented kind of what was going on, the very first comment out of one of the teachers' mouth was, "I feel like I was really listened to. I see the features that we talked about in the, in the hours and there are other things that we're working on as part of the handbook process, but the feedback has been really good." So as, as Dr. McNulty talked about, there are those two places.
So, uh, as, as Dr. McNulty talked about, there are those two placeholders on June fifth and sixth. I think looking at it right now, it's a little bit confusing because it does look like there will be four professional development days at the end. My strong, uh, instinct is that two of those, the last two, will not be there because of some of the other things that we are working on right now. Um, but we put them in as a placeholder, but my hunch is that it would just be June third and Ju, June fourth. Uh, again, just to keep things apples to apples from last year, we did put those placeholders in there, but I, I do not believe that those will end up there. And everything else was really well received and so, uh, Dr. McNulty led that group and just, um, you know, did a good job of letting voices be heard and putting together something that made sense, so.
Do, do we know the calendars of the other schools, particularly those that we compete in sports with in early fall, to know, are we, are we kind of on the same?
Oh, we are, and, and, um, let me just say that's what we bring to our athletic directors at the high school and the middle school, so that they have input, that's key. Um, and not just, not just athletic activities, I mean, we have, we have a number of other, uh, activities that we have to have, uh, coordinations of venues. Let me also add that, um, if we do have to make a change to the calendar and bring it back to the board, it won't affect our families and our students. Um, that those two placeholders are really internal for our professional staff and ourselves.
And we will bring it back to you if we decide to take those off of there, we will bring it back for a quick, uh, approval because it does need to be approved by the board. But again, just so you heard what he said, the, removing those last two days will not impact our families in any way, it's because their s, last day is still May thirty-first regardless of whether those last two days go away.
And Lyle, I just want to echo, though, I'm pretty sure that this is the case, at least here in the Cedar Valley, that this fall Cedar Falls, the Catholic schools, Cedar Valley Catholic Schools and Waterloo Community Schools are all starting on August twenty-third.
That is correct.
And that hasn't always been the case, and I think that is the case this year, which is great.
And let me just say, our partners such as, uh, the Catholic schools, um, have been working with us and, and I do appreciate their patience and we have coordinated our efforts with them.
Great.
Just a quick question, can I get this question quite a bit, um, has it ever been considered to start after September first? I mean, you know, the earliest she said August twenty-third, but a lot of parents are like, why don't you just start after, in September, just wanted to put it out there.
We, we actually have entertained that and it, and it get, it has been talked about for years, there are, um, some very distinct problems with that unless everybody goes to that, so, um, part of it, for example, we, as we push a lot of our high school kids to take college courses like concurrent credits, those start early on, so any students, when we push that back and don't start until September, you know, seventh or whatever it might be, fifth or seventh, the kids have missed three weeks of college coursework, so somehow you have to address that issue. Sports are a big issue too because you need to start, you can start so many practices before your first game and when we start late and nobody else does, then we need to have our kids coming in for almost a month prior to starting school, so it is really, it, it, it's okay to be, you know, different from other, other districts, but when you are the only one, you need to be very prepared to pick up all of the pieces of that, uh, that, that causes, so we, I think that's where, when the, when the governor, uh, when they enacted the, um, the official start date, you couldn't start any earlier than the twenty-third, I think, um, you know, although I know some districts, I got, I talked to several superintendents who were really upset about that, I will tell you, it kind of standardized it for almost everybody, I don't really know too many districts that aren't starting on the twenty-third. It happens to be a Thursday, a lot of districts do a Thursday start, so they can have their kids come in a couple days and then start the next full week, so I, I think many, many people are starting on the twenty-third. I, I personally would not recommend waiting until after, um, Labor Day unless other districts follow with us because it's, it's really tough when we are the only ones that are waiting and then that means that we will be getting out even later. We were pretty excited to bring this because I cannot remember, I, I cannot remember a time when the student's last scheduled day was still in the month of May, it's been June sixth and ninth and fifth for quite some time and so that puts, that adds another week on top of it and then summer school starts. So it's not only things on the front end, but it's also things on the back end and I'm sorry, that's a long answer, but there are lots of nuances of waiting that long.
Well, it's something weird in the calendar because it's late, we go later in December than we usually do this year, there's the, if somebody, the calendar lines up. Oh, I would say that, in your comments on, you know, the later we start, the more disadvantaged, particularly athletics, we have and I really would say, would say we're already disadvantaged in the middle school stuff because, you know, some of our kids that have transportation challenges that can't get to practices, particularly middle school and stuff, that are not practicing when some of our competition is. I mean, some of our kids are out there, they've had four or five practices and, you know, some of our neighbors are practicing one, two weeks ahead of that, so.
We have some experience in that because what was it, three years ago, when the state fair legislation was on board, they said we couldn't start until a certain date and we went with that and then subsequent to our approval of the calendar, they, they said you could start earlier than that, which a lot of schools changed their calendar. We did not, so we were out of sync and it was.
It was rough, yep.
It was, it, yeah, it was problematic.
Now, I just have a couple of questions, um, like, was there any, um, feedback as far as Memorial Weekend, having graduation on that Friday night?
There was, and, and that's why, uh, Mr. Mehe was involved in that conversation, uh, he felt it was better to wait after, just because of families traveling for Memorial Day weekend, uh, and then coming back and do the graduation after the, the holiday.
Are you talking about the Friday for East?
Friday night for East, hi.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we, we always go and run it through the building principals and they choose to take the, they attempt to take the best date possible for their families. You know, graduations are always a nuance, aren't they?
Yeah. And we have had, you know, we have had graduations on a Friday before, it's just that, that, and, and what we've heard at the committees, um, Sue, is that if you are having, if you have a graduate, you're, you're here anyway because even if you don't have a reception, everybody else does and so you don't travel if you have a graduate or, or, and you're just not going anywhere. And then we've heard on the flip side, some people really like that, especially if, if you're a, um, a relative of somebody, then you get to travel on Memorial Day and you don't have to leave right away on Monday, so there, and then, then you hear a few people say, well, I wanted to go camping on that weekend and now I have to stick around for graduation on Friday, so you can't please everybody, but I will tell you that this was looked at by quite a few people and we had input from. So the, the, the feedback on the May twenty-fifth was actually decent.
Okay, I just wondered that, and then, um.
Or twenty-fourth, sorry.
Twenty-fourth, yeah, Friday night, and then, um, just letting people know that, you know, there is a process and, you know, you're kind of in a quandary position as far as which way you do that and, and, yeah, and I do like the, how we rotate, you know, the three high schools, so that not everybody always gets Friday or Tuesday or, you know, so I appreciate that. And then just, um, questioning on the committee, was anything, or are we at all as a district looking at discussing start times, changing start times? I know there are some major districts that are changing start times this fall and just.
Bell times, right, you don't mean start class, you mean the bell time in the morning?
Yeah, start time for, yeah, and school days start, start.
So a number of districts, even before this year, um, have, there is a lot of educational research that suggests that high school students perform better with a later start and elementary students don't seem to be as bothered by it. Um, and I think that as we progress down this pathway, um, we'll probably have to investigate because as larger districts move in that direction, um, uh, then I think we'll have to, again, look at our, our stakeholders and look at the opportunities for our young people and make some decisions around trade-offs, because everything's a trade-off. Um, I can tell you that Iowa City starts, they have the flip schedule, um, but then you have, you know, you have the young ones out early, uh, and are picked up early and then you have the, the, and transportation issues around that. But, um, again, I think Dr. Lindman spoke well, if more districts are doing that, then that becomes the, the, the norm and then it's easier to arrange athletic events, again, those, um, other activities and will be more in, in line.
Yeah, I guess my, my, my addition to what he said too is, um, the focus groups really worked well this year, I mean, we really got great feedback and there were several things that uh, were suggested for changes and what we looked at is where do we start on implementing the changes and so we actually have some things that we're looking at for this year, we're just kind of in the final touches of, of looking at that, but there were a lot of things that we heard from focus groups that we would say, well, maybe those are things that we can en, could enact next year or maybe three years from now, so we kind of have a phased in, um, there, there are some changes that we're looking at right now that we would be able to announce hopefully shortly. We actually just came from a meeting before this where we presented to about fifteen, uh, staff members just to get feedback from them and they were extremely positive on that. Um, they had questions too, like, well, when could we enact this part and when could we, and that question did come up there as well, are we gonna go back and look at that? So, uh, I think the answer is yes, we would clearly look at it, but with some of the other changes, I think it was maybe just too much change for one year, so we'll start with the, these other changes and once we get kind of used to those, I think we could certainly look at that.
Do we know if the four-day differential between graduations will cause extra setup costs at, at Cloud Center or?
No, I don't think so.
I can check, um, it's never come back to me before regarding that, but I can check for you.
Oh, usually we have them back to back.
Well, and they have to do, uh, setup differently for, I, I don't think it's gonna be that much of an issue, so. They usually just charge us one fee for the whole, for all the graduations, so I think we're probably fine. Probably worth checking into though, for sure. If it is, it'd be minimal.
And where will Expo be?
Expo is held at Expo.
Expo again.
Expo.
Any more questions? Alright, then seeing none, all those in favor of approval, uh, approving the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school district calendars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item N, it's on page forty-three, this is the chiller replacement at Hoover Middle School and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the chiller replacement project at Hoover Middle School and publish a notice to bidders.
Samu.
Thanks, Sue, thanks, Jesse, um, and I know Jake is here with Modus this evening in case we have some questions. Um, Michael, I can turn it over to you, or we talked about this a little bit in facilities this morning, this is, you know, a, an overdue replacement, something that we've had in our budget for a while, but Michael, if you want to walk us through anything further on that.
Well, I think it with Jake's help with, as he can explain the, the details a little more, but just what was talked about this morning was the need, um, to not only, uh, replace the chiller, which has been waiting for a year or so, um, but the roof projects needed to catch up with that, so it could be done at the same time and that the roof, uh, penetrations and piping and so on, uh, could then be addressed to be able to do it all efficiently and to have it all completed well at the same time, so we've had it in the budget for the, uh, five-year pebble plan for, I know Marty and I were talking about in the middle of last winter of something that needed to be put on, so it's something we've been planning for, for a while.
Great, and Jake, just for the laypeople that don't know HVAC or anything else of that nature, will you explain what this chiller project, you know, you know, give me three sentences about what it means, please?
So the, the chiller that was being replaced is, well, was put in in the late nineties
and it provides cooling for Hoover Middle School. And so by updating it, um, I guess it'll continue to provide cooling for the middle school. And this is sort of run its cycle, right, it has compressors that after a while just.
Correct, yeah, it's at the end of its useful life.
Okay, excellent.
And you specified two different brands as?
Yes, the base bid will be Trane, which is what the existing chiller is, and then the base, or the alternate bid will be Dyken.
Is there a efficiency difference between the two?
Uh, the, the main difference is the type of compressor, um, but they're being specified with a similar efficiency.
Do they have scroll compressors?
Uh, Trane has a screw compressor and Dyken has a scroll compressor.
But you're gonna evaluate the bids on a equal cost basis?
Correct.
Or are you gonna give one difference over the other?
Well, we're wanting to see if there is a cost difference between the two, first of all. Um, with similar efficiencies, I guess the cost would then be the first thing we would look at and then from there, um, potentially sticking with the manufacturer that the school has in a lot of their buildings would also probably be a consideration.
So it will be a best value rather than a lost cost?
Yes.
Conclusion?
Correct.
Okay, and then is there efficiency difference between the existing one and the new one, or are they the same?
Uh, yeah, there would be, there would be a difference in efficiency and I don't have the existing, all the information from the existing chiller, because the, the file was actually lost um, with the rep that had sold the chiller to the district, so we weren't able to get the exact information, but, um, it would be updated today, today's energy code standards.
So is the new one less efficient due to the requirement for a different, uh, refrigerant?
It may, it may be slightly, but we're going from R twenty-two refrigerant to, um, and I think the two, the alternate and the base bid use different refrigerant. I think one's R one thirty-four A and one's R four ten A.
So you calculate those efficiency differences when you evaluate the bids?
You mean between the base bid and alternate bid, the, there's really very little difference between the two, um, with what the manufacturers publish, so I don't know how much that's gonna play into the, the decision since they're so similar.
And the sizing will be the same as current?
The Trane one matches up perfectly as far as the size, the Dyken chiller is a little bit different on the sizing. But it will still provide the, the amount of cooling required for the building.
So it's a hundred and twenty ton?
Uh, the Trane is a hundred and fifty-five ton, Dyken is a hundred and fifty ton. And I guess when I say that, that's the nominal tonnage that's stamped on the piece of equipment, not necessarily what the equipment is able to produce, so the actual outputs are comparable.
And what's the redundancy?
Uh, the Trane chiller has two screw compressors and the Dyken chiller has six scroll compressors, I believe. I could confirm the quantity for you.
So you could operate any number of scrolls?
Correct.
So does that add to the efficiency being able to more closely match the load with the?
The part load efficiency of the Dyken chiller is slightly better because of the number of compressors, but your full load efficiency is almost identical between the two.
Yeah, but we run it part, part load most of the time, I would guess. Have you, what's the recent, uh, have you bid chillers recently, what's the market like?
The going rate for a chiller?
The going rate, I actually just checked because Marty, um, had actually gotten some pricing about a year ago. Um, and there have been yearly price increases for both manufacturers and then actually the, the steel and aluminum tariff that, um, is going on has also impacted the pricing a little bit, so. Um, but I think the, the market is pretty good and the timing that we're, that we're in is, is good.
Is the Trane made in La Crosse?
I believe so.
I don't know if they make this model.
I can, I can check on that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
And the timeline for this, Jake, is this would be done over the summer, correct?
Correct.
In conjunction with the roofing project, so that we aren't tearing up a new roof, we're gonna be able to do these complimentary to each other.
Yep, so the, so the bid date would be April sixteenth and then go for approval at the next board meeting and then hopefully start right after that. And looking at lead times of the chiller, um, there shouldn't be any reason that we could be mostly complete by August first.
And it won't disrupt class, you know, it's not gonna come in noisy thing that we're gonna have to deal with.
Correct.
Kids moving or anything, great.
How many bids would you anticipate in something like this?
Um, I would say for sure that we'd expect two from Plum Tech and Young Plumbing and Heating, um, it kind of just depends on how the other contractors are for summer work. But we'll definitely reach out to others and make sure there's people that are looking at the project.
So does any contractor sell both models, both brands?
The Dyken and the Trane?
Yeah, the, any contractor could purchase it, um, from either Trane or Dyken.
Okay, so they're not exclusive?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jake, does anybody have any further questions about chillers?
I think Lyle covered them.
Excellent, I only, I only said compressor because I got a little preview this morning in facilities, otherwise I wouldn't know what I was talking about, so.
I was impressed with that.
Yeah, that was awesome. He has an HVAC certification over there or something, I don't know, so, alright. If there are no further questions then for Jake, all those in favor of the chiller replacement at Hoover Middle School, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you Jake.
Thanks.
Have a great night. Alright, the next item on our agenda is item O, and this is the Waterloo Career Center furniture bid. And the recommended motion for that is that the Board of Education accept, accept the recommendation from Envision Architects and approve the Waterloo Career Center project furniture bids as presented for two hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Same move.
Thank you Sue, and a second?
Second.
Alright, and there's discussion. I know Kendra is here with Envision. Again, those of us who are on facilities have been following this process. We've been able to meet with the architects several times. We've had students come in and look at different designs. We've really, you know, it's been quite a lengthy process to get to furniture. So Kendra, if you'd like to come forward, maybe walk us through these bids. And Michael, if there's things you wanna add, I'd be happy to turn the floor over to you.
Alright, so I do wanna clarify, this is for phase one of the Waterloo Career Center. There will be a phase two eventually, but this furniture is for phase one where, that'll install in August for the fall of two thousand eighteen. We did receive bids from five different furniture dealers, which was a pretty good number. What we can do, what we have done is we are able to accept the low bid from each, on each manufacturer of furniture to get the best possible price. And I, our budget was approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we came in low with, at around two hundred and seventy for this project. Like Shanley mentioned, we did have, it was kind of a lengthy process of involving the facilities and Jane and Shanley on selecting the furnishings. We had student involvement too, so we feel like that we're getting, you know, what, what is best for the district for the Career Center. The furniture is maybe a step above what's in some of the, you know, other elementary and high schools on, within your district, but we were forward-thinking with the Career Center as, as a project as a whole, so.
And Kendra, I just wanna clarify that the, the bid amount and everything was in our initial package that we had. This is not-
Correct.
This is not an additional cost.
Exactly.
This is something that we had planned on.
Right.
And as you said, the budget did, the line item for budget was three twenty-five.
Yep.
And I think with an eye toward being maybe a little frugal on the part of the superintendent and myself, that we did have some conversations in, in, in our committee meeting about as well, you know, we, we definitely don't want to outfit a brand-new building or, you know, a remodeled building on the, without great finishes. But we also wanna always keep our bottom line in mind.
Yep.
And so I, I think we really did come with a great, I guess, compromise to that. And I really appreciate the fact that we've been able to use five different vendors and get the best pricing. I think that's excellent.
Yep, yep.
So even though there were five different suppliers that bid, it looks like on three of the furniture groups, there was only one bidder.
Right, right. So, so while we did receive five bids, they all did not choose to bid on each portion. I'm, I'm not sure the reason why, but that's, that's some, sometimes how, how the furniture dealers do that. They don't always bid on, on all of the portions of the project, but.
So we did not know at bid opening that there would only be one?
Correct, right.
As we, we kinda found on single bids?
Yeah.
Right, the, and I will state too that before, when it was placed out to bid, I did reach out, you know, to several dealers to inform them of this. And so there, there were, there were other dealers that could have bid on these portions, but just chose not to as well, in addition to the bids that we received.
And then the comment concerning, what is it, Vicro?
Virco, yeah.
Virco?
Yep.
Their bid wasn't timely and yet it was considered, what's, what was the situation?
So what happened there was, that's a manufacturer that the district has been able to purchase directly from, through a contract, a set contract price. And so what we, they had contacted Marty throughout this process, throughout the bid process, and mentioned that the district would get the best possible price on Virco specifically if that was purchased through the contract pricing rather than placed out to bid through the dealers. And Marty did pass on to me, he received pricing from them, Shanley and Jane, just to remind you that was for the classroom chairs. So that was, that's a manufacturer that the district has purchased from before for classroom chairs. So we included them as an alternate. Throughout the process, when we looked at chairs, the group narrowed it down to the all steel grouping of chairs, which was their, the favorite of all of the ones. But Virco, we knew would be possibly a lesser price. And that bid did come in, I do have some questions on this, but it came in at twenty-one thousand, three hundred and two, which would be in comparison to that thirty-five thousand, twenty-five dollars and eighty-four cents on the all steel multipurpose chairs and stools. So there is about a thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollar difference there. So that, that could play into what's decided for those chairs specifically. And to recap on that, I think the looks or the, the aesthetic of those chairs and the comfort of those chairs was preferred for the all steel ones by both the students and the group. But yet, you can see there is obviously a difference in price there between the two vendors. So-
I have to ask then, are we taking that bid then? Are we taking the lower bid?
So bef, our recommendation was before we knew these numbers from Virco.
Okay.
That like I said, Marty passed on to me this morning, so there might, there may be more conversation on that.
Yeah, that we-
How, how, do we need to prove this tonight?
I don't think it needs to be approved tonight, but it-
I mean, it says unless there's a substantial difference and there's a dramatic difference.
Yeah, there is. Right, so.
I think maybe, I guess I would like to kick this back to the, to say, you know, now that you know the prices, what's the best value? I don't know, that's just my thought.
The Virco, the Virco we can get through the consortium at any point in time. So that, I don't think that has to be, we can order that regardless of, you know, a lot of times if you package things together, that's when you get the better pricing.
Right.
That doesn't need to go with anything because we, that's part of the state's consortium. So I think what you're, you're doing, and Michael helped us on that. I think that if you feel that we, if you, I think if you feel that we, the thirty-five thousand dollars or if this package is acceptable, we could even cut it down even further. You said it was twenty-one, right? So fourteen thousand off of that.
Right.
And it, it does say that the specification allows the owner to accept the furniture bids per the manufacturer category.
Right.
Not overall, so-
Correct, yep.
What, what I would be comfortable doing is accepting them, except the, except that one. You know what I'm trying to say? Accepting all of those.
You could accept all of those, except, yeah.
Yeah.
Except that one particular one. Would you be alright with that line?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, how about, is that what?
Right, so-
And just have a, and I don't, you know, I don't know anything about these chairs, but give the-
Right.
Whoever the committee is or whatever, take it back and say, okay, here's the price, which do you feel is the best value?
Yep, right, I'm, I'm right there with you. I would, I would feel more comfortable with that too.
Fourteen thousand, so.
Right, exactly.
Oh, it is.
It is, it is. Thirteen seven, it's a little-
Yep, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventeen cents. I, I do wanna go back to Virco though because I feel like they've maybe missed a slight amount. When I say that, I think they've missed maybe like eight hundred dollars in that, so it's still a-
Great, and we don't have that Virco, we don't have that exhibit because, and so I would love to see that as well before how that's broken out.
Yep.
And so if you two would be okay with a friendly amendment to accept the furniture bid minus the all steel multipurpose chairs and stools, would you be okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure, just, you know, as we're talking about bids and amount differences and that type of thing, that I know that we do always try to go with the lowest price and I appreciate that. But sometimes I do think that if the price isn't hugely different, we, and maybe we do do that, but we look to see like if they're Waterloo and if they partner or, and if they're, you know, pay taxes in Waterloo because I see, you know, some of these bidders from Cedar Rapids and Waverly. And, and I just appreciate that, you know, if, if a Waterloo business is close, I would prefer to maybe pay a, just slightly more if they were very similar just because they are supporting Waterloo and the schools and with their property taxes.
I agree.
I agree with that Sue, and I would also like to see the, if it's possible to have us a sample, not a sample, but just to see the, the furniture, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not on facilities, not that I don't trust your judgment, but it'd be good if I'm gonna vote on it.
It'd be nice to see, I don't, and like I said, we don't have the difference between the all steel and the Virco chairs right here, right now, so.
Sure, right, yep.
But even just a copy of it would be.
So Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, we can take the best value on any bid, can't we? We're not legally obligated to take lowest price, or are we?
I think that, I mean, I would probably pass this off to the architects who do professional bidding, but if we've written particular specs and they haven't met those specs, it's pretty tough not to take the lowest bid. Unless you do it as quotes, but when you've done sealed bids, that makes it a little stickier than I understand, but I would certainly want more advice than I might have word on it, I'm just going by experience.
But like going back to the chillers, if, if there's an efficiency differ, I mean, there's a calculus.
Well, if it's a spec issue and you want to make the difference, you know, something that, that adjusts your acceptance. If the two meet the spec of one is way better than that.
Yeah.
You know, that, it's a reasonable issue to consider that, but that's why it's kind of a gray area.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm just saying that though, I mean, you know, I don't know the rules on that or like you say with a sealed bid or something, but I'm just saying that if it, any case is possible, I do like to support local.
Yep.
I think what may come out of that is an unintentional action that people from out of town won't bid. Cause they'll say, unless we're really a lot better, they're gonna take local. So there's a-
I guess I don't really have that huge of a problem with that if it is competitive because local is paying property taxes and that support the schools.
It just depends on how you set up the bidding process.
Alright Kendra, so I'm gonna attempt with all of your permission for the, our friendly amendment will read now. The amended motion will read that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from Envision Architects and approve the Waterloo Career Center project furniture bids minus the all steel multipurpose chairs and stools for the amount of two hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Same move.
Thank you, and Jesse?
Second.
Excellent. Is there any further discussion about that?
The, Rhonda's, Rhonda's question was about whether the bid price could go up between now? If we tabled that particular thing to make the decision between this price and Virco, can this price with all steel or Kenworthy, is that the bidder?
Story Kenworthy.
Yeah, Story Kenworthy, can they, will they need to honor the thirty-five thousand dollar price for that particular chair?
I don't think that the, that if you make a decision now or in the time-
Two weeks when it comes back, it won't change.
It won't change.
Okay, so the price won't go up and the only thing that might happen is if we decide to accept the other chair, the Virco chair, under the consortium.
Yep.
We know the pricing for that one, okay.
Right, yep.
Okay.
No, that's, that's totally a clarify-
No, it's a great question, yeah, it's a great question, so.
That's a good one. Alright, is everything, everybody good? Alright, then all those in favor of amen, the friendly amendment and approval of that recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Kendra, thank you for coming tonight, really appreciate it. The next item on our agenda are second readings for, I believe these are ten board policy changes. This is item P on page forty-seven, and I'm going to ask Tara Thomas to come forward. And if there's anything further on these, this is our second reading.
Not at this time. I can entertain any questions though.
Okay, do, I need to, I gotta read all of these though Tara, so hang on. I'm gonna go ahead and get this motion on the, on the floor with all the different policy changes, so. The Board approves the following policies: School Board elections, term of office, Board member qualifications, Board member liability and indemnification, meeting notice, agenda preparation and dissemination, Board member compensation and expenses, School Board legislative program, required academic schedule for high school students and animals in the classroom.
Same move.
Thank you Jesse, and a second? Thanks Aster. So Tara, there were no changes from, from last two weeks, well, it was a little more than two weeks ago now, but-
Correct.
We're just cleaning up the language of certain things that have changed within our school board, like school board elections are now for four years, not three, and, okay.
Is there a need, or was it in the state legislation to extend the current terms from September to November? You know, the four years will expire.
I don't know anything about the nuances of the election change, I'm sorry.
It was in the language of the-
It was in the bill?
Yep. Yes.
So if people were expecting to be done on September, that would be extended until such time when an election is held to replace the new, the person-
Oh, I see what you're saying, the term would be extended for the gap.
Yeah.
For the two months.
If the term's extended, then there's only gonna be three board members for-
Yep.
Heavens, no.
Which might be okay.
No, that would be until the next election.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe that's true.
Right, and this is an off-year for elections, we don't have one until nineteen for a school board anyway, so.
Okay.
Your salary will keep coming.
Right. Don't worry, your pension's-
Three months of extra salary times.
Sue's gonna have you working right up to the end, Lyle, don't you worry. No putting your feet up early, so. Alright, well, is there any more discussion then about these ten policies? Alright, then seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So I'm gonna let Tara stay right there. This is our first reading, so there's no action on this. But our next item is item Q, and the board policy changes on the following three board policies.
Thank you Shanley.
Thank you.
A couple of things I will bring to your attention. If you look at the first policy change, the proposed two-eleven, the third paragraph is going to have one edit, and that is that after talking with Shanley and Pam and some requests from the public, we are able to post the school board agenda as a standalone website review option. So we will strike the line through on the district website and, and restore that. So the agenda itself will be available, posted per an upcoming board meeting on the website. But the additional documentation, you must request the Board Secretary to receive those copies based on the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance.
And Tara, that will likely be just the table of contents, not the full agenda.
Got it. We can make that correction.
Kinda reword that.
Yes, we can edit that to reflect that, which you guys would see then when it comes before you in the second reading.
And I appreciate this. I've heard from several members of the public who contact me about wanting the agenda and, and it used to be that you could get the agenda and all the supporting materials, but- all the supporting materials, but many of our supporting materials come from people like architects, they're PDFs, that are not able to translate with the, with the ADA, they're not ADA compliant with the reader, and so I, I asked both Tara and Dr. Lindman and Pam if we could perhaps work to at least get the, the agendas, or at least the index, the table of contents in there, and then also make sure that our public knows that all of our board meetings are broadcast, and then they can also watch them on YouTube.
Yes.
Just because I think it's really important for that transparency, that our public know that they can find our agendas, they can find what's happening and what we're addressing, so. And I know, Andrew, you do a great job on Sundays of covering, you know, what we're talking about at our meetings, too, so that always helps, so.
And I will get a plug in for the, if you would like to join the six thousand, nearly six thousand followers of our Facebook page, who can readily access those YouTube links, please like us on Facebook. And our content will appear high on your feed. Thank you, Shanley.
Awesome, thank you, Tara.
I did, I did have a question on six oh three point two.
Yes.
Um, we're eliminating the guardian parent head of household from the decision on our number, minimum number of credits.
Yes, this was discussed previously at the board meeting when it was at the first reading, and Sue and Dr. Comfort Anderson were a part of that discussion when that came before the Policy Review Committee. The concern was that the policy was allowing only the parents to make the decision without the need for district input, and there were some cases that were brought before the Policy Review Committee that I won't get into the specifics about, but there was some concern that without the administrative input, that it wasn't giving proper oversight for those exceptions to be made when there are physical education program requirements that are fulfilled outside of the school day.
But this gives total authority to the administrator and none to the parents and guardian, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you would suggest that it be reworded, then it wasn't meant to eliminate the parents from the decision, it was just to make sure that the parents weren't able to make the decision over and above the school staff.
Yeah, I think that weren't rewording, if that's the intent, I don't know how you got, how you guys read that.
We, we talked about this in length, actually, but, because so many things people are trying to use as phys ed, which really needs to be controlled.
But shouldn't the parents be part of?
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really, it's not about not allowing parents to be involved in that, it's about who has that final decision to, to accept a credit or not accept a credit, so we, we do have parents sign off on, like, for example, the eighth graders, the parents all, they can't be scheduled into a course until the parents have signed off on that at the eighth grade level, so, and we can, we can, I mean, this doesn't.
It doesn't keep them from providing input.
Yeah, they absolutely.
It's just saying that the administrator is going to be the one that signs off after, let's say, I as a parent bring in and say, my child does this, 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 and you give it to the administrator, the administrator said, okay, I approve that, or maybe we need to have them go to the gym three days a week versus once a month. You, you know what I mean?
I think you gotta have, I think you gotta have administration on the final say
It's really who has the final say to accept a course in lieu of, of the five credits, so.
Because I still think it allows for the parent to have input, but we're saying that it's not the sole decision of the parent. The building administrator will be the final decision.
I mean, to be.
Tara, do we have access, I'm curious what the administrative regulation, what that actual six oh three point two are, how, how that reads, but, where that reg is, but I, I'll have to find that at a different time, because I can't get out of my agenda to do that right this second. That may, I'm just saying, Lyle, I wonder if the regulation, the regulation may clarify that, so that it's a little clearer on the parent having some input as well.
But I, how, I guess I don't read this, that there's no input by a parent. I mean.
If a, if a student, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if a student wants to be exempted from a particular class, they would have to provide proper documentation, so the parents would more than likely have to.
Be involved.
To be, be involved in that.
Yeah.
And, and again, if, if a student wanted to be exempt, they would have to go through their parents to get permission, I would imagine.
Unless, I suppose if they're eighteen.
That's true.
They wouldn't have to.
But, but they would still, yeah, they, they would still have to provide the proper documentation to the administrator.
Okay, all right.
All right.
And I wanted to draw your attention to the proposed changes for policy four eighteen, staff use of social networking and other forms of electronic communication. Matt O'Brien and myself are in constant communication to talk about the nuances of what we know is an ever-changing, evolving use, and that is how social media is a part of our both personal and professional lives, and so we worked with the Policy Review Committee to have a long, in-depth conversation, actually, around how some of the wording needs to be updated to reflect current practice. So from that is born these changes on four eighteen. Just to give you an example, if you look at page sixty-four, in the middle of the page, at its inception, Waterloo schools would have referred to anybody who liked or followed us as a fan, but now we know, we call them followers.
They can still be fans.
Yes. It's just the semantics of it we want to get right.
Yes, gotcha. As soon as we change it, there'll be a new word next month.
That's right, it's a fluid policy.
Yes, yes, for sure, so.
And just so you know as well, because of the need to constantly re-educate and remind staff about appropriate use and how the changes in social media platforms have resulted in tweaks and updates to our policy, once approved, then these, or once they come before you, then these policies will be sent out in an email in a concise way, sharing and updating with staff what is new, or drawing attention to them, something that might change their current practice.
You know, just quickly, social media is so powerful, and it is very nuanced. When we're doing instructor or faculty training, and also for students, do we have a portion where we go over, over that?
Yes, great question.
Right.
Matt O'Brien, Dr. Smith, and some of the other staff worked on a video, actually, it's about two years old now, thankfully not yet dated, but it's really in-depth and talks about that very issue, and how we want the use of social media to be embraced, because we know how educationally beneficial it is for staff and students, but with that dipping your toe in the social media water comes a lot of responsibility, and you have a professional responsibility when you identify yourself as Waterloo school staff. So we really tried to share that video, and then we specifically air it during our new teacher trainings in August, and then we now are really trying to extend that reach to some of the students and parents as well. And Matt O'Brien and I were just talking about, it's time for a, a new video that really would target, you know, the audience that you allude to, because we know that a lot of parents aren't aware of how involved their young people are, and I know the middle schools have invited me to come and speak to a lot of the classes about that, which has been a privilege, and then we also have Stacy Hesse, one of the school resource officers, is really involved in that education piece, too, because unfortunately, we know that some of the social media content sharing has legal and criminal implications for our young people, so we're trying to be proactive with the parents, but always more to be done on that note.
Great question, Rhonda. Anything further then for Tara on these, these will come back to us in two weeks in April, these next three? Unless, nope. Good, okay. Thanks, Tara, if anybody has anything else, I'm sure they'll reach out to you. All right, so without further ado, I'm gonna move on to our two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget estimate and publication, this is item R on page sixty-six. I'm gonna turn this over to Michael Coughlin. Michael, let me, before I turn that over too prematurely, let me get the motion on the table, which is that the Board of Education approved the budget expenditure estimate and the tax levy rate for publication, and set the public hearing for the two thousand eighteen nineteen certified budget at six PM on April ninth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Thanks, Sue, and a second?
Second.
All right, and for discussion, see, I was just so excited to get to tax levy rates that I had to move it forward.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try and hit the high points of this, there's a lot of information there, and it's necessary information just to understand, but hopefully some of it you can just use for reference and go through it yourself, and I'll go over it kind of quickly in some of the areas. Getting to the point of setting the tax rate and what the maximum expenditure budget would be for all the funds combined together. That's what shows up in the certified budget proposal that you, that we publish, which should be in the paper on Wednesday, so we can make the deadline to have it published enough days before April ninth. So these are all the different funds that we use, that you're familiar with hearing about it, but the top three, the general fund, the management fund, the physical plant and equipment levy are the ones that are affected by property tax. The rest of them have different funding, save comes from the penny, the capital debt repayment is just using saved money to pay off bonds, and then the student activity and the lunch fund have their own fees and so on fundraisers, and, so tonight we are talking about the effect of those three funds being supported by property tax. So just some information that you've seen several times before, our enrollment numbers. This is our unspent authorized balance, it's predicting for the current two thousand seventeen eighteen year that our unspent balance will be similar to where it was at the end of sixteen seventeen. So we are a little bit over our target of ten percent, but we have things in the works for the next budget to address that, and we're gonna be talking about that more as we go along, not in this setting, but as other things come to bear.
Which ones are actual?
Next year's budget, excuse me?
Which ones are actual, which ones are proposed? Two thousand seventeen is an actual?
Yes.
And then eighteen is a proposed.
And everything forward, y'all.
Correct, thank you. Same thing for solvency, and even though the number, the amount is going up, the rate comes down a little bit, just because of, well, actually, it did go up a little bit, so it's, it's staying pretty flat, but we have seen a significant jump in the last two years. Our, we are over our target a little bit, but as we've talked about in finance, we're really not that far above a lot of UEN districts in the amount of our unspent balance, nor our solvency ratio, so it's not an amount that's foreign to our size of schools and little schools. This is the graph that we keep our finger on as far as is our unspent balance backed by cash, and we can't use actual cash, because that's always high at the end of the year on June thirtieth, because we haven't paid summer salaries yet, and once you pay all of our responsibilities, then that's a fund balance, so the fund balance and the unspent balance are running very close to each other, and that's just saying we have cash to back our authority, so that's what we're looking for as far as health of the district. Okay, so the eighteen nineteen proposed budget, the state supplementary allowable growth, I'm so used to saying that, of one percent, this is what this is all based on, and in seventeen eighteen year, it was six thousand six sixty-four. We did get a one percent approved by the governor, which is sixty-seven dollars, but then because of the equalization of the difference between districts on the state cost per pupil, they added another five dollars, hoping that will continue to draw together that hundred and seventy dollar gap that goes between highs and lows in the district, so it really, it's like one point oh eight percent, so pretty close to last year, and our new cost per pupil is six thousand seven thirty-six. So we'll talk about the revenues, because that's really what builds a district budget, it's not based on, like municipalities, that they figure out what they need to spend, and then they tax and find other revenue sources to support that. We start with revenues, because it's based on our number of students times that cost per, state cost per pupil. So I'm just gonna run through some of the, the components of this. Our budget spending authority is based on the combined district costs, and we'll get into a little more detail of what all of these mean. The instructional support levy program, the state voluntary pre-K, miscellaneous income, and the prior year's unspent balance, so what we have left over, we carry forward, and that gives us our current budget authority for the year. So the combined district cost is made up of several components, it's the enrollment times the state cost per pupil, so that's why enrollment is very important, but, and again, in addition to that, we have supplemental weighting for ELL, for PSEO, for modified at-risk, then also special need weighting for special ed, and Level one, two, and three is added to that. We also have the teacher salary supplement program, the teacher leadership program, then the AEA costs, and the at-risk program. The supplementary weighting is another part of, of, of an at-risk, it's not the large at-risk that we do every year as a separate amount, which the majority of it is funding expo and many other programs besides, but the, the second lineup there, supplementary weighting, is one that is an automatic, that is based on enrollment and what our free and reduced count is, so there's just a, it's just an automatic that comes into the funding of the district. In addition to that, we have voluntary pre-K, and we get to take the actual enrollment, divide that in half, and then take at times the new cost per pupil, so we're at just about two million dollars for that program by itself. The instructional support program was supposed to be, back in early memories of my career, it was basically ten percent of the program district cost, and the state funded about twenty-five percent of it, the district took the rest of it, and that, they put a limit on that, and as more districts approved that, and it grew, the amount that the state contributed grew less and less, and they finally just eliminated it. So it's, we don't get the full authority of that ten percent, we only get about sixty-seven, sixty-five percent of that, depending on how it grows each year. And that is action that is done by the Board every five years. It's still about four point eight million dollars that is put into the budget for instructional programs, so it's very significant to the success of our budget. Miscellaneous income comes from all different sources, federal, state, local, some of them have very restrictive sources. Some of them have very restrictive sources, some of them are pretty much open however we want to use it. So there are federal grants, state grants, local grants. The SBRC allowable growth that you've done approved when we have extra open enrollment, extra ELL. And if we take out asbestos and we claim that, we can get revenue back for that that we can apply to doing a cash reserve levy, which is part of what we're talking about tonight. There's other things that we have, facility rental, open enrollment and tuition. And actually, this year and hopefully next, we get interest. That we've had that on the list for ten years and it really didn't mean much, but it's starting to mean something. So we'll talk about that more as we do monthly reports. So this is kind of a diagram of how the state looks at this to say how the budget is built. And on the left-hand side, the big circle is kind of the main things that I just went through. The regular program, which is the enrollment times the cost per pupil and then special ed and supplementary, supplement weighting and then the state categoricals, ELL, TQ, TLS, TLC and TSS. And then the dropout prevention and then the ones above that major square, the combined district cost. We get into preschool, which we just mentioned, and the instructional support levy and the SBRC modified allowable growth and miscellaneous income. So then on the right-hand side is the formula of how the revenue is then stacked together as far as taxes and state aid. And everybody in the yellow, every district in the state, levies five dollars and forty cents. And then the state fills up the budget to say eighty-seven and a half percent. And then the additional twelve and a half percent is property tax again. So as you look at this, it can really be different by whether you have high valuation per student or low valuation per student. So on the lef- left-hand side, when you look at a rich district as far as property rich, they have a lot of valuation for each student. So five dollars and four, forty cents, in this case, funds forty-three percent of their budget. In a poor district, it's much less. And we are more on the much less part as far as our value for the number of students. So the, the state then fills up to eighty-seven and a half percent on both of them. So the red is equal on both sides. And then the last twelve and a half percent is by property tax again. And if you are low value, that means you have to levy more tax to get that twelve and a half than a rich valued district. So that's how the system works, that it's funded equitably, but it takes a little more steam from some districts to be able to raise that money.
Can I ask just a quick question and I don't want to tear it too long? Have we assessed how the per pupil value will be impacted for our district? If the school voucher thing, I don't want to get too deep in the woods or too political, but have we assessed that? Because what that means is those funds per pupil can be used for an educational savings account to go to a private school?
There's, there's a lot of components on that. There's been some different language that have come through the bills. I've done some preliminary work, but it's really hard, it's really hard to know how they're actually going to apply those dollars to the formula. So it's, you know, it's, I've, I've gone through a couple of different scenarios, but until you see the actual wording of the bill, it's really hard to get your, get your hands on it to understand what it's really doing. So... And I have some theories of my own, but it's not pertinent at this time to talk about those because what the language that comes out may treat it entirely different. So that's why it's just better to wait and see what, what happens. Okay, for, we've talked about what is the authority of the district and we talked about the combined district costs and all the different things that make that up. I'm not gonna go through all the details again, but we've raised that a little bit from a hundred and eleven million to a hundred and twelve seven. So that has gone up a little bit. That's the authority that we have to spend. So you can see that just the, this, the initial number at the top, the seventy-three million is the enrollment times the cost per pupil. And you can see the effect of all those different components brings it up to a hundred and twelve million. So it's a lot of components that go into building where our budget comes from. So you carry that forward, the hundred and twelve, seven sixty-six, and then you add last year's unspent balance, you add the instructional support levy, you add preschool, state aid, you add miscellaneous and our budget authority total is right around a hundred and fifty-two million, just for the general fund.
One, one other quick question, the dropout prevention budget, does, do those monies go towards salaries or is that general budget?
They go towards salary.
Okay.
I mean, that's part of the general budget, it's a component within the general budget that is the at-risk. But it does go to salaries as far as expo, it goes to salaries as far as PBDA. There's some reading programs, there's some flash things, there's... So there's quite a, quite a number of components that it actually contributes, maybe not just to the main salary, but supplement like flash, reading program. And that, that at-risk money has addressed a lot of different programs over the eleven years I've been here. So it's kind of a fluid attention depending on what we have going on in at-risk at the time. Okay, so just to put some numbers to this. The actual numbers for the revenue, and I just wanted to show you the breakdown of how this kind of shows in a picture of a hundred and thirty-four million of actual revenue for eighteen-nineteen. This is projecting into next year. So about a hundred and thirty-four million in revenue and sixty-three of it is state aid, twenty-six is property tax, then federal eight, additional, some additional state grants or another two and then this local is a, is one percent. So if you were in a rich valuation district, that, that state aid portion would be a lot smaller. So we have, we, so you can almost see that those two numbers get up to the eighty-seven percent. Okay, we also have not just the, the formula of the property tax. We always have some cash reserve issues. It's not as imminent, important as it has been in the past because, like I said, the fund balance and the authority balance have met each other and we've got cash to back up our authority. But there are areas that money comes in a little delayed. Delinquent property tax, the SBRC modified supplemental amounts for new enrollment, open enrollment, ELL, asbestos, those come a year behind. Then there's also a state juvenile home reduction that comes out of state aid for everybody. And federal grant reimbursements is money that comes in after you've spent it. So we don't have that when we close the book. So there's the timing issues that we have to do. Okay, getting into the taxable valuation, and I didn't include TIF because TIF is used for calculating the tax rate for the instructional support levy and for PEPAL, but it is not used for the general fund proper and it is not used for management. So you can see in our history that it's bounced around. Last year, it went up two point seven two percent. This year, it went down point seven four percent. So it's not a big dollar amount, but it does have an effect when we apply it to our tax askings.
Is, is that a result of the rollback numbers?
Yes, that's part of it. Because this is the, this is the taxable valuation. So the rollbacks have all been applied before we get this number. Good question. Okay, so the, so just a breakdown of this, if you want to look into any particular area of how much of the two point seven billion dollars of property value, how it's broken down by the different components. We did see some, a major change in ag buildings. It's not a big dollar amount, but it's, went down ten percent. Multi-residential went from like forty-one million to sixty-seven million. So I always kind of predicted that, wondering if that was going to happen as multi-residential condos kind of came on as a new category. It took a couple of years for people to get into the right category because they pay, there's advantages and disadvantages tax-wise and everybody has their own purpose. So this has, this changed quite a bit. That there's a lot more value in multi-residential than there has been and that's only been in the cate-, as a category for three years. So the other ones, all of the other ones are pretty minor changes. So this is the tax levy rate for all of the funds together, general fund, management, PEPAL, that we have levied in the last six years. So it's gone from fifteen eighty down to fourteen ninety-eight over that time period. And one of the questions that I had when I first put in the new numbers, we had cost per pupil going up, enrollment going up, and I came to Jane and the finance committee and said, "Our tax rate's gonna go down again." Why does that happen? So you would think that to be able to levy more money, you would have to raise the tax rate, especially when the valuation goes down. So if that was the only components, that would be true. But there's three parts of this that I've never really talked about. You've heard about it, but I've never really shown you what effect this has on the budget, on the tax rate. And one of the parts goes back to nineteen ninety-two. If you can think about where you were at in nineteen ninety-two. I was actually doing these things in nineteen ninety-two. But it was when allowable growth became, became an active part of the formula. Just a couple of years before that, state aid wasn't even part of this. It was all property tax. And I'm not even trying to remember how that formula all worked, but in the midst of that transition, they gave districts a tax credit. And I didn't dig back to look because I had a hard time finding enough to, information for somebody to tell me it was nineteen ninety-two. But I'm guessing it was in the two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar tax credit that we got. And that has been, been continuing every year if valuation increased. So if valuation increased three percent, they took three percent off of that two hundred thousand dollars. We're still, we still have a balance of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand on that amount. And it's worth almost a nickel on our tax rate. And the state is still paying eight point four million dollars for that. It's in their state budget. Every year, they support it by that much. So it, it's an average of a nickel across all the districts. So I'm assuming most districts have this as a, as a credit. Second part.
So that's money that's paid to the district by the state?
The state puts it in state aid.
In addition to the...
Eighty-seven and a half. So then we don't have to levy that amount of money. Because the state is, the state is backfilling it to us.
It's in total dollars?
Excuse me?
It's in, what is a hundred and twenty-seven thou-, that's the amount we get, right?
Yeah, it's part of state aid.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Yep.
And what determines that?
It was just a tax credit that was given back in, in nineteen ninety-two that...
It's that three percent.
What's that?
It's that three percent number. Three percent of the increase, is that what you said?
That's just if, like this year, our tax valuation went down.
Yeah.
So they didn't take anything away from that. We got a hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine ten this year and we're gonna get it next year because our valuation went down. In years that it increases, they take that, if it goes up three percent, they'll take three percent of one twenty-seven and reduce that amount. So it's not a huge, it's not a huge amount for any district, but it's just something that was part of a tax credit long ago.
And over time, it'll go to zero?
Yep.
Okay.
So this, and the state is still contributing eight million to that. This part is the SSA. You've heard the conversation of saying, "When the state increases the SSA, the allowable growth goes up, the state pays that portion." So how this works, I'll just give you a, a couple of scenarios in the bottom. In two thousand eighteen, the cost per pupil was six, 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 four. Times the twelve and a half percent is eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. The cap the state put on there was seven hundred and fifty dollars. Because I'm assuming that was the average at the time that they started the legislation of saying, "We're going to fund the increase of the SSA." So that's eighty-three dollars. Times our weighted enrollment, that's this, in seventeen-eighteen, we got one million, one hundred and six thousand in additional state aid. And it wasn't charged to the taxpayer. So our tax levy rate was point four one, lower than it would have been without this. Same situation for nineteen. SSA went up again. So now it's a difference of eight forty-two minus seven fifty, it's ninety-two dollars times our weighted enrollment. Two million forty-two dollars that we don't have to tax the local taxpayer. It's, we're getting additional state aid for that. And that's forty-six cents on our levy. And the state, through seventeen-eighteen, has committed over forty-six million dollars to this program.
How can the amount be twice as much?
What's that?
How can the amount be twice as much in nineteen as eighteen?
Because...
That doesn't make sense mathematically.
Because our weight, it's, I'd have to, I'd have to do, multiply it out. I've got that on a different sheet.
Our, our weighted enrollment didn't change that much, so there's something...
I can dig into that and show you the details, but it's about a dozen, a dozen lines long. What's that?
What's weighted enrollment for nineteen? What number?
Ten thousand nine hundred ninety-two, something like that.
So our base enrollment is... I gotta find the levy, here we go. Okay, our base enrollment is ten thousand eight seventy-eight point eight. Our weighted enrollment is thirteen thousand one fourteen forty-four. Could you have to add all?